On May 20, 2024, a notice this meeting was transmitted to the Board of Education. A copy of the notice was posted at the Education Center Bulletin Board. Copies were also transmitted to the Milburn Short Hills item, the Star Ledger, the Milburn Short Hills Independent Press, Tap Into Milburn Short Hills, the Township Clerk, and members of the Township Committee, the Presidents of the PTO and Civic Associations, and the Public Library. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular public meeting of June 2, 2025? Mr. Bigman, Ms. Longley Richards can second. Any comments?
No.
All in favor?
There are two.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we have a multitude of presentations tonight. Dr. Diskin had a prior commitment which delayed, and she wasn't able to get back for this meeting, so she apologizes for not being here in person. So, Mr. Conley is pulling double duty, and we'll do a number of the presentations. Please take it away, Mr. Conley.
Good evening, everyone. Our first presentation this evening is about some bus posters. The School Transportation Supervisors of New Jersey, the STS, held their annual poster contest this year, and our middle schooler, Ariana Padre, won first place in Division III. The theme was "Safety First, Safety Always." The winning posters are now being included in the national competition. She will receive the award at the ceremony. She received the award at the ceremony last week. The Milburn Middle School will also receive $100 gift card. Congratulations to Ariana. So, our second presentation this evening is to recognize some additional Eagle Scouts at the last Board of Education meeting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Conley, Ariana is here if you want to recognize her.
Oh, Ariana. There you are. Okay. At the last board meeting, we recognized Milburn High School students who achieved Eagle Scout in May Quartz of Honor for Troop 17 and 19. We would also like to give a shout out to the current Milburn students who attained this honor in previous years. From Troop 17, I believe we have some scouts with us, they can start to come up as I call them. Leonard Yu received his in May of 2024. Milan Ha, May 2024. Lucas Polarski, May 2023. Ben Seifer, May 2023. Andra Berman, May 2022. And also, who just received it last week, from Troop 15, Michael Olawabi, in June 2025. And Sarvajet Maha Deban, June 2025. We want to congratulate all these Eagle Scouts on their achievement.
And could Dan Cannon maybe come up and join them for the pictures, Scout Master?
This evening, I want to send a special message to all of the retiring staff members, thanking them for their dedication and many years of service throughout the Milburn Township Public Schools. We invite the retirees to the Ed Center to publicly share our congratulations, as well as wishes and acknowledgement of their service and gratitude. I want to extend a heartfelt congratulations to each of these staff members, who have spent many years in their respective roles and service to the Milburn Township Public Schools, to the staff and students. All the best to them as they take on this next phase of their life. We have a little presentation to honor them, and then some awards to give out.
Sorry. I'll do without the music. I'm sorry, I don't know why it's hanging up. Mr. Keenan? There we go, Mr. Myron. Am I doing it from the start? Oh, crud. Boy, technical difficulties, I apologize. Let's try that again.
High school.
Okay, yep, yep. I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
some of them are here tonight to be honored, and some of them will just work here all the time, like Cheryl and Nancy. So, coming up first, please come on up and Karen Odell. Louis Quelo. Congratulations, everybody, we wish you all the best. And we are lucky enough that some of these people aren't home frantically grading papers, some of them are here tonight to be honored, and some of them will just work here all the time, like Cheryl and Nancy. So, coming up first, please come on up and Karen Odell. Louis Quelo. Andrew Pearl. Eliana Biller and Alice Lim, the MHS Student Planner Cover Design winners for 2024 or Well, congratulations, everybody, we wish you all the best. 2025-26. Both students are MHS seniors and have created these designs in Digital Art and Design II
Yeah.
of the elective class.
Yes, Snagger, Snagger, Snagger.
Eliana and Alice earned an award of $25 as a gift card from the MHS PTO.
If you can find a hole, that'd be great. And if this is a good view. Put a toe into the, am I right? Right here. All right, here we go. And a count of three. One, two, three, and three, and three. I don't like Bay County women. Thank you. Thanks for getting down in there. Yeah.
It's already up, yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay. An honorable mention goes to a student, Allison Chang, in ninth grade, who also contributed to the final design. I'd like to call up Ms. Kristy Young to do the rest of the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristy Young, I am the Director of STEM, and I was approached by Carla Dominguez, our District Data Manager and System Integrator, with a tremendous opportunity that we would be able to bring to our Digital Art and Design II classes. And so, with that, our students, when they sign in to use any of our technology platforms, utilize a platform called Class Link. Class Link helps us to allow students to enter these platforms that we have throughout the district using a Google Single Sign-on. And as of now, this is the screen that all students across the district see when they sign into this platform. And so, in conjunction with Ms. Catherine Riley, our art teacher for the Digital Art and Design I and II classes, we work together in order to be able to have the classes create a new sign-in sheet for our Class Link. And so, here are the students that participated, with some of them contributing more than one design, but what we received is 22 different designs, and I'm showing you them here. And students utilized both Photoshop and Adobe Illustrator to create these. And with myself, Ms. Dominguez, and with Ms. Riley, we were able to narrow down our selections to two, and they belong to Ms. Eliana Biller and Ms. Alisa Sahovic. And for next year, the two combined drawings that were created are going to be our new Class Link sign-in, which the students will be able to see all year with their names both present on it. And so, next year, we look to do the same exact type of competition with students from the Digital Art and Design II classes being able to contribute their work. This is a tremendous learning experience for the students, really getting to act as they were designers, coordinating back and forth with all parties involved to make sure that we were able to produce this type of sign-in screen. And so, it will look like this once it has the Class Link logo and the sign-in on it. So, we congratulate Ms. Eliana Biller and Ms. Alicia Sahovic. Thank you so much.
So, our next presentation and acknowledgement is regarding the new, MHS's new Computer Science Integration Initiative, CS II Club, has released its inaugural magazine titled Catalyst. Catalyst features 15 articles written by MHS students on topics including application of artificial intelligence, robotics, quantum computing. Catalyst is available on the web, and also in physical copies will be distributed throughout the school. We also want to thank Mr. Dave Farrell for his leadership and helping to bring this initiative forward. So, congratulations on the inaugural copy. Great.
Hilton, come on up. You guys want to talk about it or no?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Yep.
Is it on here?
No.
Okay.
I'm Hilton Seibert. I am not David Farrell. He's feeling a little under the weather tonight, so I'm going to speak on his behalf. But I teach at the high school in the Mill, and I am the advisor for the Computer Science Integration Initiative, or CSII. And I am here to introduce the leading members of CSII to talk about their publication. This periodical is a result of the innovative and unique environment and culture that has been carefully developed over time in the Mill. We encourage creative thinking and foster an atmosphere where students can pursue advanced concepts and innovative computer science and technological disciplines. In the Mill, we do not micromanage, but we do encourage. And so, now I will turn it over to CSII.
Hello, everyone. My name is Benjamin. This is Rithvik. This is Alexandra. This is Subi. This is Tages. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present our publication today. As Mr. Seibert so kindly introduced, we are the leadership team of Milburn's Computer Science Integration Initiative. We brought you the kiosk system previously, and today, we're excited to present to you our new magazine.
So, this magazine has been the culmination of a year's work. We started developing it over the summer with an idea, and it's become a finished product that you see in front of you today. It is the combination of many hours of editing and meeting with other magazine leaders and supervisors throughout the school to understand how they publish their magazines, so we can get an idea of how to publish our own.
And of course, this would not be possible without the help of Dr. Myron and the administration, who so kindly provided the funding for our first issue, as well as help from printers, and of course, Mr. Farrell, Mr. Seibert, who helped supervise the club. So, without further ado, let's jump right into discussion about the magazine.
So, to talk to you a little bit about the process we took to reach our finished product, we divided it into three steps: member submission, article editing, and magazine design, which we will each talk about. We promoted the magazine among members during meetings, as well as making submissions accessible through Google Classroom and advertising over Gmail, so that we could get as many submissions as possible. We recommended about 800 to 1,000 words per article, we felt this was a good amount, that we didn't want to limit people's creative freedom and their ability to express everything that they wanted to express. Additionally, we encouraged people to include images to make the information more palatable, since this is a heavy topic, as well as making the magazine more engaging. After the member submissions, in the back, you'll see a page on our CSII occurrences. This includes all of the projects we've done at the club, including the kiosks that Ben previously mentioned, as well as several guest speakers that we've been lucky enough to have speak. And after that, we have some closing notes from our club supervisors, Mr. Farrell and Mr. Seibert. For the future, we hope to create a member spotlight section to highlight exemplary accomplishments and projects by MHS students. We hope that this will help people achieve the recognition that they deserve for their hard work, and we hope that this incentivizes people to not only embark on more ambitious projects and to strive for harder achievements, but also, we hope this will increase engagement with the article, and we hope this will incentivize people to continue to submit to our magazine. After we receive all our member submissions, we compiled everything into a spreadsheet and a master document for organization. This helps streamline our editing process that Tages will now talk about.
One of our most intensive processes is the article editing process. Each article is assigned to two separate editors to increase the accuracy and the quality of the edits that are made. We check, we edit for word choice, clarity, and cohesion with the rest of the articles in the magazine, make sure that no topic is too, dwelled on too much, and we have a very cohesive magazine. One of the major parts of the editing process is identifying unusable images that we cannot use for various reasons, most likely licenses, and replacing them with Creative Commons images that we are allowed to use due to licenses. And we make sure that we keep these images in line with what the writers intended by keeping in contact with them throughout the entire editing process. And we hope to add as many images as possible to keep articles engaging and reach as many people as possible. At the end of the editing process, our chief editors, Rithvik and Benjamin, go over everything one last time and ensure quality. For images and the rest of the sources in our articles, we ensure that we have proper citations and proper accreditation for everyone involved. So, at the bottom of every article, we have an entire works cited section with citations for images and all sources used. In the future, we really hope to increase our editing team's size, which will have two major effects. Firstly, it'll allow for more member involvement and experience and grow new chief editors over time. And secondly, it'll decrease the time from submission to publication. And we don't think that this will reduce the quality of our edits at all, because we will keep a top brass of chief editors. And now, Subi will talk a little bit about our magazine design.
So, once we finalized the textual content of our articles, we needed to figure out how to format it in a way that was accessible and inviting. And so, we used Adobe InDesign to achieve this. Due to the school's license that we had, we were able to all use InDesign for free and collaborate in a streamlined fashion. And in terms of the actual layout, we wanted to create a layout that is accessible, inviting, and allows each article to stand out for its uniqueness and creativity. And so, after a few design iterations, we settled on the one that's in front of you today, and it is easily reproducible for future publications and future issues, so that we can minimize rollout time. And in the future, we might consider having a theme when we have a call for submissions in order to have more cohesion between articles.
So, now that we kind of talked a little bit about the editing and design process, we'll talk a little bit about the printing. So, I mentioned earlier that I want to thank the printers, and we actually went through a lot of iterations of trying to search for printers with reasonable price points, and we finally settled on one that's actually local to Milburn. It's called Easy Print 123, and it was really, really great, and we're also glad to support the local business in Milburn. So, we ended up printing 100 copies, and they've already been distributed throughout Milburn High School, and you have a few here with you today.
So, to conclude, we hope this magazine becomes a mainstay at MHS, and it's published for many years to come with more rapid publishing, so we can have not just one magazine a year, but maybe two and some, maybe even three. And furthermore, we are extremely grateful for the independence and creativity that the Mill environment has provided us to embark on this project. So, we'd like to give you the opportunity to take a couple of minutes to look at the magazine, and if you have any questions for us on any part of the publication, please let us know. Thank you.
And we have a couple of extra copies up here. If anyone wants a copy, you can raise your hand.
Any questions or comments for the team? Ms. Longley Richards, do you have a question?
Well, more just a comment. I just wanted to say that just, I did look through each article and like kind of skim just for now to see, but some of the stuff I saw in one of the articles was something that I was working on in my graduate degree. So, I'm just highly impressed that this is happening in Milburn High School. So, congratulations and many kudos to you guys.
Ms. Bethina?
Hi, guys. I wanted to ask, so how does one go about getting a copy outside of this room? How do you plan to distribute it, and will there also be an online version of it?
Yeah, so, a few weeks ago, we distributed them at the main entrance of the high school, and they were pretty popular. We ended up having to restock the, we were doing a trial run to see how many people wanted, and it ended up going away pretty soon, so we distributed them. There's also an online copy on the Milburn High School website under Publications, along with the other publications that are done at the high school. So, if anyone wants to look at the online copy, it's there.
Ms. Vannie?
Just really want to make a comment. This is really impressive. It is so professional. I cannot believe this is published by high school students. So, congratulations once again, Alexandra Subi. It's great to see, I know both of you, so it's really good to see you two here. Congratulations. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I think this magazine is amazing. I put through it, and the last article about the kiosks, it's really amazing that you guys did that to make our school safer, and I don't think the junior privilege program could have happened without the amazing kiosks that you guys made.
Very good. Thank you so much for presenting. Back to Mr. Conley.
So, this evening, we're just going to take a few minutes to review our progress on our district and board goals. So, as you know, everything is tied to our mission statement. Our district mission statement is to educate students to be successful and engaged citizens. We achieve this through the outstanding teaching, the challenging programs, and the enriching experiences in a safe, nurturing, learning environment, ensuring that students meet proficiency and
All right, very good. Thank you so much for presenting. Back to Mr. Connolly.
So this evening, we're just going to take a few minutes to review our progress on our district and board goals. So as you know, everything is tied to our mission statement. Our district mission statement is to educate students to be successful and engaged citizens. We achieve this through the outstanding teaching, the challenging programs, and the enriching experiences in a safe, nurturing learning environment, ensuring that students meet proficiency and meeting and exceeding standards on the NJSLA each year. A school district's role and personnel plays an important part of this. The district serves as the primary administrative unit for delivering the public education, ensuring within the school's boundaries that the, the district is run orderly and operates effectively and equitably, you know, within the guidelines of our, our goals. Many constituents help to contribute to us achieving our board and district goals. That includes our staff, that includes our superintendent, our Board of Education, our teachers. You know, every single person in the district plays an important role in helping us to meet the board and district goals, and it doesn't rely just on one person. We cannot do this without the team effort or Team Melbourne. This slide showcases various school buildings, facilities within the district, demonstrating the scope of our educational environment. The district's mission and goals are not single-handedly accomplished by any one person, as we mentioned before, with our focus being on our students and our staff. We follow a continuous improvement cycle, which involves four key components. We plan, we do, we study, and we act. We plan, we select strategic, and we select a strategy and create a plan to determine where and what we want to be done. We implement that plan by focusing and execution on next steps. We study and assess the impact of the decisions made and the initiatives put forward, and we act and we adjust the plan accordingly, reassuring our team and our plan and our strategies are effective within our schools. So to the goals, District Goal 1, Culture and Climate, to promote and support a healthy, balanced environment for teaching and learning. Our objective, our objective was to ensure systematic cohesiveness in the implementation of our criteria and processes for intervention. Specifically, we did that through the NJTSS initiative this year. The rationale, the rationale for Goal 1 includes equitable support and interventions for all students. It also aims to streamline the processes for educators to focus on teaching, monitor and assess effectiveness, and foster better collaboration among our staff. Key action steps for Goal 1 included establishing a cross-functional implementation team. We also administered screeners and benchmark assessments to analyze the data through the district and the school data teams. There is a focus on consistent application of New Jersey Tiered System of Support, or NJTSS. Providing professional development and training was also part of our action steps. The outcomes for NJTSS, training, the framework for training was to provide building INRS teams in grades K through eight with ongoing team building, support, consistent application across the schools, continued professional development, and the implementation of evidence-based practices aligned with NJTSS. This promotes equitable student support district-wide. The implementation, a cross-functional implementation team and professional development programs were established. The SEL screener was administered in grades K to five. The academic screeners in grades K to, excuse me, in K to eight was the SEL, K to five was the S, the benchmark screeners for academic. And then we did the academic ones in ELA in grades three to eight, and we also did in math, three to five. NJTSS framework and ongoing support emphasizes the same training, the team, building team support at the building levels, professional development as the training continues to evolve, reinforcing our commitment to developing these, these processes to ensure that students are receiving the type of education that they need to. For District Goal 2, the District Goal 2 was Teaching, Learning, and Assessment. To promote a collaborative teaching, learning, and assessment environment that inspires creativity, innovation, and differentiation to all student learners. To ensure assessment and grading practices foster growth mindset, ensuring that they reflect student potential to achieve at or above proficiency levels, consistent with the high standards of Melbourne students. District Goal 2, our objective there was to promote a collaborative teaching environment, a learning and assessment environment that inspires that creativity. This included ensuring that assessment and grading practices emphasize that growth mindset for students and for our teachers. The rationale for this includes establishing a district assessment framework. It acknowledges Melbourne students' high academic achievement with the value on assessing students with a growth mindset and addressing the findings from the Equity Audit. It also considers student-centered grading approaches. The action steps for Goal 2 include conducting the Equity Audit, which was conducted last year, reviewing its findings relative to the grading and assessment practices. This involves reviewing the grading and assessment practices at Melbourne High School, revising the BOE policy number 2624, the grading system, and reviewing and updating assessments relative to standards and instruction. We also reviewed and adjusted course progression pathways and increased access and provided information sessions for students, staff, and the community. Some of the key outcomes for Goal 2 included the revisions to our board policy, revisions to our grading system, and revisions into the development of the grading and assessment guidelines for Melbourne High School. Assessments were reviewed, updated, and course progression pathways were reviewed and adjusted to increase that access as mentioned before. Assessment practices were modified to be more process-based rather than product-based, and more rubrics incorporated into the curriculum. Grading practices were analyzed, accessibility and equity, and enrollment practices for AP courses were reviewed to ensure equitable access. This also led to an increased accessibility to courses with revised prerequisites. And then in Goal 3, we had the Comprehensive Equity to promote a culture of belongingness, equity, and access for all students by fortifying an inclusive instructional program and an environment for learning. Establish an understanding of district needs reflected in the Equity Audit. The rationale for Goal 3 is to address the inequities and ensure that all students have equal access to the quality education. It helps to prioritize these areas for improvement, allocate resources, and develop effective programs to address the unique challenges facing Melbourne Township Public Schools. This goal aims to create policies that promote equity and inclusion, foster an environment for all students, so that all students can thrive regardless of their background. And it also facilitates better communication with stakeholders and builds trust and among, trust among stakeholders. And then our action steps for Goal 3 include the Equity Audit findings and presenting key insights, which we did in the fall, and we conducted stakeholder feedback sessions and developed prioritized action plan, which will result in our three-year professional development plan for assisting students and carrying out the work of the Equity Plan. As mentioned earlier, this report included a multi-year comprehensive action plan, a walkthrough protocol for identification of differentiation in the classroom, which our teachers were trained on last week. And we've seen increased access through higher level courses, through the revised pathways, and also the grading and assessment guidelines, truly allowing students to thrive and be able to see and reach their true potential, which is now allowing additional access. So in conclusion, thank you for your time and attention. We feel we've done a really good job at, you know, addressing our district goals, and we look forward to building on the work that we did this year. So thank you, and I'll take any questions that we have on that.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Any questions? Mr. Ready?
More comments than questions. First, Mr. Connolly, I want to congratulate you and Dr. Diskin and the entire staff on what has been a very busy year of activity in both improving educational delivery, such as broadening the access through various changes and rules and policies and regulations, and also the biggest change the, the school district has seen in terms of organizational change. These achievements are definitely unprecedented, at least in my time looking at the board. The next two comments are really addressed to my colleagues, but on a couple of fronts, we have much work to do. On Board Goal 1, which while much work has been done on organizational structure, the real work of articulating the change in the, in the vision and the mission of the school and the result on long-term goals has yet to begin. This is essential to position the school district for the long term. The world continues to change around us, not just catching up as we are doing right now. This is, of course, a multi-year process, but a clearly articulated vision and mission are critical to the staff and to the community, especially with most of the, the schools in the district having new leadership. The mission of the school should provide not star when staff faces ambiguity. And so it, I hope that is completed in this calendar year. On Board Goal Number 4, I am deeply disappointed in the board not meeting its goal, which is to formulate annual internal and external metrics needed to assess and act on district progress. The central reason behind that goal was not to repeat the mistakes of the past. This board, of all the boards, should know better. Four board members of this board, including me, was sitting here, helped us in 2023 when the administration claimed that, that the board members cannot see grade distributions of high school by subject and law. As a result, we couldn't verify the student, the parents' concern on punitive grading. Eight of us were here in 2024, when we had to work hard to get that data access. And what we saw showed how right the parents were. I would like to remind my colleagues of some of that evidence of grade deflection, less than 1% of A's in the whole 10th grade English. About half the students getting a school grade worse than the proficiency indicated by their college board score. These are just a few examples. The board is a policymaking and accountability body. Data is critical to the decision-making and holding people accountable, whether it is the board holding that administration accountable, or the public holding the board accountable. As they say, sunlight is the best disinfectant. It is why this goal is so salient to us. With the changes in Opera last year, it's now more than our important to create the institutional mechanisms so that the mistakes of the past cannot be repeated. A policy and regulation to provide key metrics is not a commentary on the current administration or the board. And I have to point out that the current administration have full confidence and I believe, and wholeheartedly believe are people of high integrity. But these measures are needed to strengthen this board and future boards in ensuring good decision-making and accountability. With time, the hard lessons we learned here over the last two years will fade, and the need for such a policy will be forgotten. Hence, now is the time to get this done. Besides, if the board is not serious about meeting its own goals in time, how can we expect others to take any deadlines or goals seriously? The board should do balance. I urge my fellow board members to move swiftly to complete this goal to compensate for this last time. Given the coming summer break and the fact that the next meeting is on July 21st, I urge the board president, Mr. Hamrick, to call a special session in between, say, June 30th, to discuss the draft policy and regulation for the first reading, to allow public comment over the intervening three weeks with the final policy and regulation adopted at the July 21st meeting. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'd just like to say thank you, Mr. Connolly, and certainly thanks to Dr. Diskin. And just a reminder, she didn't officially start her role till October. You came in in January and did double duty for, for a couple months. So I think the, the amount of stuff we accomplished this year is, is quite impressive. We certainly didn't get to everything, and although I enjoyed your presentation, it doesn't begin to capture everything that the administration does. The goals are kind of a subset of things. We try to elevate and really focus on those. And I think the nature of our goal-setting is to push us a little bit, so we're sort of biting off more than we can chew. If we get all of them, great. If not, we've at least moved the ball forward. So even though we didn't get to everything, certainly the, the process is in works, right? We started a strategic planning process. We've started work on the metrics. Are we happy with where those are? Absolutely not. But we'll keep pushing. We'll get there. And, you know, thank you for all, all of your efforts.
Thank you. And I think that just my last comment to all of that is that, you know, a lot of the work that started will continue, right? And we've started the ball rolling in the right direction. And I think that's, the hope is that we, we continue to build on some of the successes that we've had this year and, and make it better each year for our, our community. There is one more presentation. I know you guys are sick of me, but you got a little bit more to go. So this is just the district's residency, residency report, which is required, and there is not a, a presentation to go along with it. But the, the residency report is a local report, and it is delivered in December and June annually. So our residency levels, residency lead investigated, there were 15 incidences of that this year between the time of December and June. Resolved by the district paper check process, six. Resolved by surveillance, four. And residency leads under investigation, there are five. And then residency leads referred for hearing, there was one. And then recommended for residency hearing process, there's a total of one. And then the, the result of that is undetermined at this time. So that is the update for our residency report for the, the reporting period of December to June. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. You can take a break for about five minutes till your next presentation. All right, moving on. Board president's report. Just one thing to address. Before I jump into that, I do want to say it's great to see all the recognition that we did in the beginning of this meeting. There are so many great things that our students do. We don't really even get to touch the surface. It's great that we can have a few groups here to recognize them in person. Dr. Diskin hits some more in her weekly updates that go out to the community, but I still hear of tons more that are happening around our community. So it's, it's unfortunate we don't have the time to recognize everybody, but it's great to see so many different groups doing so many great things across our district. So the, the main update for me is I'm happy to announce that negotiations with the MEA have concluded, and tonight we'll be recommending approval by the full board of the contract under Personnel Agenda Item 2A. So as a reminder, the board is responsible for doing the balancing act between the students, the taxpayers, the teachers, the staff, and the administrators, which are often quite at odds. And given the, the limited resources we have, trade-offs and compromises are inevitable during the process, and we can only accomplish so much with each cycle as we go through the negotiations. So we had a lot of conversations about the So we had a lot of conversations about the contract over the past year, but the ultimate result is actually fairly straightforward. Just to summarize really quickly, it's a standard three-year term going from July 1, 2024, to June 30, 2027. The compensation, which is usually the biggest piece, the first year, 24-25 is at 3.27%, 25-26, and 26-27 are both at 3.4%. So if you kind of average those out just on a straight-line basis, it's an average of 3.36%. There weren't too many language changes. There was some work around the paraprofessionals where they were paid more on a daily rate, which led to their compensation moving up and down over the years based on the number of days they had. So we kind of straightened that out and annualized that. Couple other small things, but in general, not too many language changes. I think it's fairly common for the new agreement not to be completed by the expiration of the old agreement. Across many of the districts in New Jersey, of course, the old agreement does stay in place, and that's what we are operating under for the past year. Once this contract is ratified, the teachers do receive retroactive pay for the period that the new contract was not in effect. So that will happen here shortly, once it's approved. It's really hard to compare the results of this contract across the district because there are many ways to compensate the team, and it's not just the headline number. But to give some reference points to our 3.36 average percentage, within our own district, we settled the administrators' contract, which is a much smaller group, and I think that average was 3.2%. So the teachers essentially are getting a little bit more than the administrators. Some comparable districts that have settled over the past year, year and a half, like Summit was at 3%, Princeton was at 3%, Westfield was at 3.2%, Livingston was about 3.23%, and the Chatham's was about 3.4%. Of course, there's a lot of other districts. We're in Essex County. Many of them are settling much higher. I saw a couple over 4%. So I think there's very different districts coming from a much lower base, and they must have gotten some sort of tax waiver in order to be able to increase that much, because that would put a lot of pressure on the budget. But essentially, looking at the comparison points, we're in the upper end of the ranges of comparable districts, and I think we should feel very good about where we settled. But again, just those headline numbers are not exactly comparable, just a reference point. I do think we have some of the best teachers in the state. I do think our compensation should be among the best in the state. One of our goals is to attract and retain the best teachers. So I think this contract goes a long way toward that goal. I would certainly like to thank many people for this effort, starting with our external counsel, Mark Tabakin. He led us through the process, gave us advice along the way. And of course, Cheryl Snyder, who is the backbone of anything financially we've done in the district. We could not get anywhere without her efforts. Certainly, the negotiations committee. Priya was on for a bit, Vishwa Asaf, and Noel came on later on. They put in a lot of hours, talking through various scenarios, planning, and engaging with the MEA. And of course, our counterpart is the MEA. Thank you, Lois and team, for all the efforts over the past year, working with us, collaborate in good collaboration. And certainly, thank you to all the teachers for your patience. I know it's been a long time coming, and we all wanted to get to this point sooner. So that was the good news. Separate, I'm a finance and accounting person, so I can't give a good news without a caveat around it. I just wanted to kind of reiterate one point we talked about when we finalized our budget. So as we always say, our revenue is capped by state law, essentially around 2%. We just approve a contract for raises of 3.3 and change percent, right? So that will create pressure. Additionally, this year, we saw state aid go down for the first time in a long time. We lost $300,000 or something like that. It was capped at a 3% decline. The underlying formula would have had us drop much more. So I'm certainly not the expert in this area, but it's pretty easy to see that that trend may continue where we're losing state aid, meaning our overall revenue will go up something less than 10%. So I'm not blaming this teacher contract by any means. Even at the low end of our range, 3%, this same pressure would exist. So don't take my words that I'm blaming a teacher contract. This is a systematic challenge that I think every school district faces. And I just wanted to remind the public that although we're very happy with this contract, a couple of years down the road, there may be financial pressure. So I feel like I'm doing a 10K risk factor from my old life or something like that. But I just wanted to throw it out there. Last point on negotiations, we do have another union, the CWA. It represents janitors, groundskeepers, a few others. Normally, the administration, meaning Ms. Schneider, negotiates directly with them, and the board doesn't get too involved. There's been some logistical challenges with that contract. So to my knowledge, there's not, you know, too many issues. They're just working through it. Hopefully, it'll get done soon. Ms. Schneider has 14 days left, so we're hoping for that timeframe. All right, I think that's all I have to update. Did I give you a long enough break, Mr. Connolly? Are we ready to roll into the superintendent's report?
We're ready to roll into Dr. Diskin's report. I will be delivering Dr. Diskin's report on her behalf. As the school year draws to a close, Dr. Diskin sincerely wants to thank the Board of Education and the community for their unwavering support and patience. Most importantly, heartfelt thanks goes out to our dedicated administration, our staff, our teachers, and above all, our students for demonstrating incredible flexibility, perseverance, and resilience throughout the school year. Despite our many challenges, each of you brought your unique strengths and worked together to create the best experience for our students. I wish everyone a safe, joyful, and healthy summer. Just a quick hiring update. Our hiring of our administrative school leaders is complete. In tonight's board report, we are announcing the appointment of Dr. Ann Richardson as the next principal of Washington School. Dr. Richardson is currently a vice principal at Milburn High School. She is an experienced educator with six years in Milburn. She holds her standard certificate and doctorate in education from Seton Hall University. She has taught grades three, four, and five, and held administrative roles at the high school and middle school levels. Previously, she was a STEM supervisor for grades six through eight, where she spearheaded initiatives in technology integration, interdisciplinary learning with next-generation science standards. She strongly advocates her research-based instructional strategies, data-driven decision-making, and fostering the growth mindset within her students. Also tonight, on tonight's agenda, is the approval for interim high school vice principal, Stephen Van Dam. Mr. Van Dam comes with us with over 26 years of, 26 years in education, the majority of as an assistant principal in Cranford School System. And then our next announcement is the Juneteenth celebration. On Tuesday, June 17th, from 3:00 to 4:30, the Milburn High School Black Student Union will hold an event at the Bower Center in Taylor Park in collaboration with the township and the NAACP of the Oranges in Maplewood. It will feature student art, live performances, and distinguished speakers from Seton Hall University, Milburn, CEDA, and more. The district will honor Juneteenth on Friday, June 20th, in accordance with New Jersey State holiday schedule. And then finally, the middle school and high school graduation and move-up ceremonies. The middle school move-up ceremony and the high school graduation ceremony will take place next week. We look forward to acknowledging our eighth-grade students' readiness to take on the next steps of their K-12 journey. We are excited to celebrate the graduation of our high school seniors and their families as they prepare to wish them farewell and the best of luck to them in their future endeavors. I hope everybody has a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Did you say Juneteenth was Tuesday or Thursday? I thought I heard Tuesday, but it's Thursday.
The 17th is the, yeah, it's.
Celebrated Tuesday.
It's celebrated Tuesday on the 17th.
Holidays, I'm right.
Yes, but the holidays celebrated on the, oh, and today is.
And we're taking off the 20th.
Right.
Yes. No, it's more about the celebrations. It's Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah.
Okay. Very good. All right, moving on to board committee reports. Student representative report, Mr. Glad.
Hello. Good evening, members of the board, parents, students, and our dedicated teachers and administrators. Tonight, I'll share a story. It was fall of 2023, and I was in class with Dr. Feely. I had just joined Milburn High School, and it was my third school of my high school career. At one of my old schools, every grade had open campus during lunch. I explained to the class about what a nice privilege it was to have my freshman year. Dr. Feely looked at me and suggested that I go to the Board of Ed and present this idea if I ever wanted to see it happen. The following week, I saw an opportunity to run for student representative. At the time, I wasn't sure what this role entailed. However, I knew that would give me a spot on the Board of Ed. The next day, I asked Dr. Myron if I was allowed to put up campaign posters, because at the time, I was new. No one knew who I was, and I needed to get my name out there. Unfortunately, Dr. Myron advised me that it would be a tough race, as I was new to the school, and campaign posters weren't permitted, as I may interfere with the freshman elections. So I had to pivot. I started an Instagram account, where I started interviewing students about life at MHS, and also started posting the videos on YouTube as well. Unfortunately, my first attempt at running for student representative was unsuccessful. Dr. Myron was right. You can't win an election when no one knows who you are. However, I found out about our amazing Studio 462 from both Dr. Keenan and my good friend, Henry Myler, who was already a member of the club. The studio allowed me to conduct even better interviews than what I was already doing with students, and I started to interview veteran teachers and administrators to document their amazing careers. Through these efforts, I was able to connect with a much larger portion of the student body that I had barely known just a few months before. The next time around, I ran for representative again. However, this time, I'd gained more of a presence and was lucky enough to have the backing of our class president, Mark Patty, and class president, Vice President, Maren Finan. They were kind enough to go the extra mile and create video endorsements for me to send out to the student body. Without Maren and Mark putting their trust in me, I don't know if I would have had won the election otherwise. A few nights after being elected, I saw Dr. Diskin at the college fair, and I expressed to her how excited I was to work on student initiatives. She then explained to me how excited she was to hear my bi-monthly sports updates and looked forward to the first meeting. I think at the time, we both underestimated the opportunity this role provided and what could be accomplished for our student body. In my first week in the position, I started to gather insight and information from the students about what issues were important to them. Some students wanted a new place to study. Some loved test corrections and wanted them to continue, while others had some reservations about them. Some loved their February break and didn't want to see it go. Many juniors and even sophomores wanted to go in the town for lunch. Some wanted to take more APs, while others were stressed out. Well, to put it, and some, well, to put it simply, they wanted Milburn Deli iced tea. While it's been amazing to hear all the different ideas of what our students wanted, it was even greater to hear contrary feedback from students who opposed ideas. Hearing those perspectives helped me learn this year that no great idea can be successful without thinking of every possible way that it could fail. Another valuable insight I can share after my time in this role is that the student representative has a duty and a great opportunity to share information from board meetings with the student body. Because I had my social media platform, I was able to do that very easily. However, not everyone has that. Going forward for the next cycle, it'd be helpful for the student representative to provide meeting summaries in a Google Classroom or section in the school's newspaper to encourage students to read about all the board activities. Another suggestion would be to move the student representative election from the fall to the June prior of the term, when incoming grades 10th through 12th host their student council elections. This would provide an opportunity for the current student rep to share pointers and advice with the new student representative and have that representative possibly sit in on the last board meeting to see how things are run. A great takeaway from my time is how crucial it is for the student representative to attend the entire meeting. There are many presentations given by staff members describing what each department is doing for the benefit of our students. I enjoy being there to ask questions that represent what the student body would like to know and comment on what I have observed as a student myself. Something else I learned, and perhaps the most valuable lesson, was taught to me by Dr. Diskin and the board. I learned that no matter how hard some might push to keep things status quo, change is inevitable. And sometimes, even when you feel you could have broke wall, the best strategy is pivot. This is a lesson that I'll carry for the rest of my life. The last lesson I learned is best said in this quote. "The party will tell you to reject the evidence of your eyes and ears." It was their final, most essential command. Now on to student activities. Everyone wants to know, who was the lucky winner who had the opportunity to tie Dr. Myron in the face? Was it Jeff Belt? Was it our superintended Dr. Diskin? Was it me? None of the above. Leheen Zaman was the lucky winner who generously donated $125 to tie Dr. Myron in the face. Even more impressive, the fundraiser in its entirety raised over $1,000 for the New Jersey Center for Corrective. Congratulations to Eric Song and Minus Althani, who are organizing this amazing event and accomplishing their fundraising goal. Lastly, on Tuesday, the Rackets Club hosted the Milburn Ed Foundation's annual film fest. I was amazed by some of the films that were shown. Congratulations to Sam Bludgeon, Henry Myler, and Ethan Twu, who produced some of the winning movies. A special thanks to Joanna Parker Lentz for putting the amazing event together, and to Mr. Rhodes for teaching everyone how to be great filmmakers. It's been an amazing year and experience on the Board of Ed. Thank you to everyone who participates on the board and for bearing through my reports, even when I make proposals about the Milburn Deli. I wish to, I wish the next two representatives luck next year, and I hope everyone has a great summer.
Thank you, Mr. Glad. Any questions? Everybody. Ms. Bethina, you spoke up first.
I just want to thank Mr. Glad. I think you've been one of the most engaging student representatives, and I appreciate the kind of, you know, 360 review you just gave us and self-evaluation, awesome. But also the fact that you thought ahead and thought about what we could change. You're a change maker. I appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yeah, I also want to thank you, Mr. Glad. Phenomenal job as the student rep, really taking a level of dedication to the job that we just haven't seen. From the polls you did of students, just the effort you put in, the time you spent here with us, and again, polling and posting stuff on your social media account, you just, you raised the bar in this position to a whole new level. It's going to be a tough act to follow, but I do hope you leave notes for the incoming people. I know Jackson is senior next year, too, so we'll have some of that. But yeah, and your suggestions are great, and definitely we can hopefully try and implement some of those going forward. But thank you for all your work this year. It's really been fantastic.
Mr. Ready?
I'm not going to report some of the points my colleagues have made, but Zach, you raised our expectations of what a student representative can be. And for that, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you also for dropping those breadcrumbs for future representatives. I think that's going to be very valuable for who is going to step into your shoes and Jackson's shoes next year. And I don't think you need it, but I wish you much success in your future, wherever that might be.
Ms. Shivani? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you indeed. I mean, I know at a time when most high school students are hard pressed for time, the fact that you spend your time here, it really speaks to your dedication. And I think the story, the Milburn Deli, I'm sure they are thankful, Milburn Deli is, but also you've actually exemplified that persistence is key and, you know, never give up. So great job on that, and congratulations.
Ms. Longley-Richards?
Yeah, I will echo most of my colleagues in that it's been just a joy and a pleasure to have you here, and I enjoy every one of your reports. I was tipped off that tonight was going to be a big one. My son came home and let me know. But although it was not supposed to, but anyway, so strike that from the record. But yes, no, whether it was, you know, speaking with you at a swim meet, or just, you know, just how engaged you were in every aspect of just being. or, or just, you know, all, just how engaged you were in every aspect of just being a part in your, of your job, of the community, with the students, with the staff, with the board. I mean, it was just really fantastic to have you, and I did really get a kick out of everything that you said, but it was all very good. It was all very awesome. So, many congratulations to you. Thank you for being the representative, and I wish you all the best for your future endeavors.
All right, moving on to finance and facilities. Mr. Bigman's going to read on behalf of Mr. Lawrence.
Board members present were Brian Lawrence, Chair Asafar Ashudin, Jennifer Bethina, and Noel Bigman. Staff President Cheryl Schneider, Dan Neipen, Peter Stars. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on June 9, 2025 at 7:00 PM and discussed the following for facilities review. The high school auditorium project started on June 9 and is planned to be completed by November. Reviewed transportation enrollment, which appears to be ahead of last year. Transportation salaries to be adjusted consistent with district increases. And discussed adjusting transportation staff retirement payout rate to be consistent with other district employees. For the finance review, we discussed year-end, end-of-year fund balances. Reviewed May transfers report. Reviewed 2020 and 2023 referendum balances. 2020 referendum is nearing completion. We also discussed the Milburn High School backfields. For tonight's resolutions, the committee reviewed and recommends the following items for full approval by the full board. May transfers report, Board Secretary Report, Treasurers Report, and Bill List dated June 16, 2025. Transfer excess funds to capital reserve and/or maintenance reserve. Summer staff appointments. Transfer interest from capital projects to debt service fund. Food service price list. Dual use of one space at Washington and one space at Wyoming. Kindergarten bathroom waiver at South Mountain and Wyoming. And back pay tuition for non-resident. The meeting ended at 8:40 PM. Respectfully submitted, Noel Bigman.
Thank you. Any questions for finance and facilities? Ms. Shavani?
So, so the update for the auditorium completion is up November? Did I hear that right? Might conflict with some of the high school, like the play and the concerts and is there an alternate plan?
So originally, our, the substantial completion date is towards the end of October. We are watching that. We're aware of the fact of everything that's coming up, the play being in November and a lot of concerts in December. Continuing to watch it. It literally just started. Optimistically, it will finish on time as scheduled, but it is a very big project. So we're, we're looking at all the contingencies to just keep it in mind in advance.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yeah, just to take further on that question. Knowing that the high school is the biggest auditorium space in the district, is there, are there, what other spaces would we look at for some of that stuff?
So again, we're optimistic that things will be on schedule, but can't always count on that exactly. There was discussion, as you can imagine, Dr. Siegel, who is always on top of things. As soon as we even talked about doing the project, she started coming up with some contingencies, one being perhaps the middle school auditorium, but we really have not gotten to that point yet.
All right, moving on to program. I believe we have two reports. Ms. Longley Richards is going to do the first. Mr. Finkelstein's going to do the second.
The program committee met on Friday, June 6, 2025 at 2:45 PM. Board members present were myself, Cynthia Longley Richards, Priya Shavani, Noel Bigman was subbing, and Chris Heinrich was also subbing. Staff present was Dr. Kate Diskin, Mr. John Connolly, Ms. Abrams, Ms. Young, and Ms. Graff, and Ms. Martin. So Mr. Connolly introduced a new program called Hipster that the district will be piloting. The platform provides tracking and processing software as well as SAF training. We briefly discussed how the new AP weighting may affect some students, particularly music students. Mr. Connolly will reach out to other districts to see how they approach weighting and to Megan Garland to see the impact on our students. He will also collect data on enrollment numbers to see how this looks for our students and our programs. Ms. Graff then discussed the work that she and Ms. Watts have begun to transition to common assessments for social studies. The goal for '25-'26 is that 50% of summative assessments will be common. Lastly, we discussed student accountability in regards to the grading and assessment policy, specifically retesting and recouping points. Teachers have asked for a way to hold students more accountable, knowing that the students may not be using all of the resources available to them since they will get a second chance. The committee and administration will continue to review these issues. The meeting ended just after 4:00 PM. Respectfully submitted, Cynthia Longley Richards.
Any questions for Ms. Longley Richards?
I just had actually a comment and a question about the AP weighting. So my understanding is that the AP weighting kind of approximates how the colleges take, take our different classes and kind of calculate a weighted GPA based on the rigor of each class. Can we look to see whether colleges have a cap on how they calculate? Like, you know, if you take more than four APs in a single, in a year, do they have a cap on which, whether they give, you know, weights, additional weightage to the AP classes or not? Is that something we can look into? Because that's really what we're trying to do, right? We don't know exactly how the colleges calculate, but we're kind of giving a sense. We do, what we've heard from every single admissions counselor is that colleges recalculate based on their formula anyway. So it'll be good to get a sense of what that is.
Correctors, oh, Mr. Connolly, you weren't involved in the weighting discussions that went on. It was before we were on the board as well. But I, I was one of the parent representatives at those meetings. I don't think we kind of like were, the research we were doing, I think we're into other high schools and how they did it. I don't think there was a ton of research into specifically how the colleges do their weighting, even though, yes, it is true, they all reweight us. But I think the weighting is just internally for our own students to try and equate the, the level of challenge in the different classes and try and come up with something that sort of balances the rigor against the grading. But I think, yeah, I mean, it seems like we could, we could look into what colleges some are doing, although they're not very transparent. Yeah. Should I go?
Thank you.
Any other questions for the first meeting? All right, Mr. Finkelstein?
Okay, the next program committee meeting was this Friday, this past Friday, June 13 at 2:45 PM. Board members present were myself, Andrew Finkelstein, Ms. Ready, Ms. Longley Richards, and Ms. Shavani. Staff present were Dr. Diskin, Mr. Connolly, and the CNI directors, Ms. Abrams, Ms. Young, Ms. Graff, and Ms. Martin. The committee heard a brief summary of Ms. Young's doctoral dissertation research project. The committee approved the project, which will include data collection on AP enrollment at the high school. The data and report may be useful for further understanding of our school's AP program. Next, Mr. Connolly and the CNI directors provided a summary of the work being done on final exams at the high school. The directors have worked closely with the high school department chairs to help craft new exams that align with common standards of assessment. Some of the directors had taken exam personally, provide their feedback to the department chairs. There will be a process of review after students have completed these exams. The committee discussed plans to review midterm and finals policy procedures this summer. There is also a teacher survey about exams that will provide input into the process as well. Ms. Martin then provided an update on the new math pathways rollout and preliminary enrollment data. Early feedback from standardized testing of fifth graders suggests that a relatively large group of students will be given the chance for accelerated sixth-grade math. The committee and Ms. Martin then reviewed the seventh-grade enrollment and discussed various parts of the program, including additional pathways. Students will be reassessed again at the end of sixth grade for placement in seventh-grade math, providing more opportunities for access to this program. The goal is to continue to provide multiple on-ramps in our different levels of mathematics. And I think there's a presentation that's going to be rolled out, obviously, when the data is, and the program is, the numbers are completed. The committee also discussed reviewing middle school placement data over the summer and evaluating the criteria for different levels. One goal would be to further align with the high school standards. Mr. Connolly then led a brief discussion about GPA weighting at the high school. The committee discussed impacts on music students, given the recent changes to AP calculations. The committee agreed to give this point further consideration again over the summer. Finally, Dr. Diskin provided a brief update on the hiring process. Our high school principal's search firm expect to be sending over a list of candidates for interviews in the next week. The meeting concluded at 4:00 PM. Respectfully submitted, Andrew Finkelstein.
Any questions for Mr. Finkelstein? Thank you. Moving on to staff liaison, Ms. Bethina?
The board staff liaison committee met on Thursday, June 4 at 3:00 PM. Board members present were Jennifer Bethina, myself, Noel Bigman, Cynthia Longley Richards, and Priya Shavani. Staff present, Dr. Diskin, Mr. Connolly, Lois Enfanger, Daniel Green, and nine members of the high school staff. The board met with high school teaching staff to hear their concerns, explain the rationale behind the recent changes, and identify next steps for collaboration. Teacher representatives shared a list of concerns to guide our discussion, which focused on changes to grading, assessment, and AP courses. Teachers voiced concerns about declining student habits and motivation, unclear policy implementation, and the impact of technology on learning, as well as low morale and feeling excluded from key decisions. The board emphasized the importance of teacher expertise and acknowledged that the changes were prompted by urgent challenges, including shifts in college admissions, rising student stress, declining enrollment, and a rapid technological disruption. The meeting concluded with a commitment to ongoing collaboration and the formation of administration-led working groups to address implementation details. The meeting ended at 5:00 PM. Respectfully submitted, Jennifer Bethina.
Thank you, Ms. Bethina. Any questions for staff liaison? All right, I think that's all the committee reports. Moving on to your actual job, Mr. Connolly, Assistant Superintendent report?
Thank you. District Elementary Library Statistics. Our elementary library media specialists are proud to celebrate another outstanding year of programming. Highlights, highlighting includes author visits from Aaron Nell's Steinke, engaging lessons, and successful fundraising. With over 69,000 books checked out in the grade range from K to 4, we extend our heartfelt thanks for the dedication and volunteers to those who helped check out all those books, return all those books, and return those books to the shelves. It's a lot of books. Washington Halls of Learning. On Friday, June 13, Washington School hosted its Halls of Learning showcase, featuring fifth-grade social studies builder and science projects. Parents toured the hallways, explored the portraits, digital escape rooms, and interactive biomes exhibits. The event celebrated hands-on learning, creativity, and collaboration. Congratulations to the Washington students who put those program, or those projects together. And then, go ahead. Want your applause? Also, just want to take a moment to thank the Ed Foundation, the MMSPTO, and the Paper Mill Playhouse for another year of a great presentation that took the entire middle school to the Paper Mill Playhouse to see The Little Mermaid. So, thank you to those, those organizations. It was a fantastic presentation of The Little Mermaid. Students had a great experience and were wowed by the set and the, the level of acting and, and music that was performed there. So, thank you. We also want to talk a little bit about the Science Research Symposium, the 21st Annual Science Research Symposium, led by science teacher Chris Cook, took place on Tuesday, June 10, 2025. Guest speaker, Dr. Emily Brick, Bick, who is currently a professor at, of entomology at University of Wisconsin Madison, and the MHS Science Research Program alum. Opened the event, students' presentations and poster session followed. The program designed for highly motivated students builds research, inquiry, and communication skills. And then finally, the CNI Department, or the Curriculum and Instruction Department, has launched its Summer Skills Sharpening website, and we are excited for everybody to visit that. It will be live and accessible on Tuesday, June 17, for both district, through the district website and your child's homeschool website. This site is valuable resource for academic enrichment activities and mental health support to help students stay engaged, balanced, and prepared over the summer. We encourage you to explore the tools and materials available through that website to support your child's growth and well-being during the summer break. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, John Connolly, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Business administrator report, Ms. Schneider?
Resolutions on tonight's agenda include resolutions that we do each year that allow for the transfer of current year surplus to the capital and maintenance reserve funds. The resolutions must be approved in June as it relates to the funds for the current school year, even though the amount of available funds is not identified until the audit is completed in the subsequent school year. The resolutions indicate a maximum transfer amount. They do not obligate the transfer of funds, but afford us the option to make this transfer if we determine to do so at the time of the audit. Two other annual resolutions on tonight's agenda include the approval for the transfer of interest earned on capital project funds to the debt service fund and a resolution allowing for the hiring of staff between meetings during the summer months with board ratification at the next regular meeting. Business agenda items M3F and M3G are annual resolutions to apply to the county for alternate use of rooms and for methods of compliance. These are renewals of approvals we have had in the past. Resolution M3O is to approve a new phone system for the district with improved communications beginning July 1, 2025. M3N is for the purchase of the physical phones. The best pricing for the system was available through the Monmouth Ocean Educational Services Commission Cooperative, which we have not participated in previously. Resolution M3M approves the membership in this cooperative at no cost to the district. Membership will afford us access to other bids and potential savings in the future. And two quick reminders. Notice went out that there will be a board retreat on Friday, June 27 at noon here in the district meeting room to discuss the 2025-26 district goals. Continued discussion of the goals will take place over the summer at the July and August board meetings. And just reminder that anyone interested in running for Board of Education, petitions are due to the Essex County Clerk's Office by 4:00 PM on Monday, July 28. Petition forms can be obtained on the Essex County Clerk's website. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. All right, next is public comments. Please state your name and address for the record. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Responses to questions and comments will be posted to the district website before the next board meeting or within 10 school days.
Jeanette Glass, 348 Old Road Hills Road. Dear board members and administrators, we recognize that your roles are challenging, and we appreciate your commitment to serving our children. Your commitment to a safe, healthy, inclusive, and enriching environment for all students, regardless of individual needs or exceptional talents, is vital to a thriving school district. Once again, we're here to engage in open dialogue. We seek to understand the reasoning behind recent decisions and to ensure that all policies, policies reflect fairness, inclusivity, and well-being of every child. Our collective goal is to work together in making our schools a place where all students, scholars, artists, athletes, and everyone in between can flourish. Students are unique, and we value your commitment to meeting individual needs. When approving accommodations, a concern of opening the floodgates may arise. However, fairness does not lie in limiting opportunities out of fear. It lies in making informed, student-centered decisions grounded in need, evidence, and compassion. We have seen accommodations made for individuals and groups, showing both flexibility and empathy. You have allowed Sanscript option for one student. You created a pilot math program in ninth grade for 40, and you passed a retesting policy for high school that opened up the floodgates to middle school. That is why we respectfully raise concerns about recent decisions affecting few national elite athletes under the age of 14. These students train year-round, putting in 18 hours plus a week, balancing physical, academic, and emotional demands few others experience. Many medical associations support developmentally appropriate accommodations for young athletes of this caliber. The recent denial of accommodations based solely on age without regard to individual health, academic performance, or well-being raises serious questions. We ask for clarification and reconsideration, not only to support these students, but to ensure you are not creating barriers based on age, which is a violation of Civil Rights Act, the Age Discrimination Act of 1975 for educational programs, which states, "No person on the basis of age will be denied benefits of a..." person on the basis of age will be denied benefits of a program." Our shared goal is to support every student where they are. Though no system is perfect, we trust your commitment to listen, reflect, and adapt. We're all here because we care about our children, their health, and their future. Let's continue to collaborate in making our schools a place where excellence, equity, and empathy are not only values, but practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glass.
Raul Assange-Mikkelsen, 1015 Faly Road. I just have a statement regarding the AP GPA weighting and the effect on the music program. On behalf of the students of the MHS Music Department, we are requesting the consideration of extending the modern GPA policy change to our schools' rigorous and high-achieving music ensembles. Recently, the newfound policy changes allowing all AP classes to be included in GPA calculations has allowed for more flexibility and equitability in class planning, however, has had serious unintended consequences for students deeply committed to music. As it stands, no music ensemble, regardless of how selective or rigorous qualifies for AP-level GPA weighting. This difference discards students from continuing in these programs, which, in our view, is something not to be taken lightly. Participating in honors ensembles demands a level of commitment on par or exceeding those of many AP-level courses while simultaneously maintaining the academic standards expected of Melbourne High School students. The precedent of AP weighting being given to courses is also seen in other rigorous classes, such as AP 12D, AP 13D, and Science Research, all of which are given APA AP-level weighting without submitting a College Board-type exam. Music is not just an elective or a program. It's a vital part of our identity and a cornerstone of our school culture. The students in our ensembles are more than just musicians. We are artists, leaders, and active members of the community. For many of us, music is a daily commitment and a lifelong passion. It shapes how we express ourselves, how we connect with others, and how we can contribute to our school. Yet, with the current GPA policy, students feel increasing pressure to choose between pursuing music, something we love and invest deeply in, and maintaining competitive academic standing. We are not asking for special treatment, but rather recognition of the academic and personal rigor that these ensembles require. Granting AP-level GPA weighting to honors music ensembles, not limited to wind ensemble and chamber strings, would acknowledge the substantial contributions of student musicians and ensure the continued strength of our schools' music programs. We love what we do, not just as musicians, but as students striving for excellence in every part of our education. With your support, we can ensure the arts remain viable and a valued path for those who follow us. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Esther Bandari. I live at Teo Hickory Road. I have a 7th grader at the middle school. First, I want to thank the board for all the work and effort you do for our kids. I'm sure it's not easy. I wrote some things down because it's important to me and I don't want to forget. I want to bring up an issue that concerns me and many other parents, which is cellphone use in schools. We believe that students should not have access to their phones during the school day, except in emergencies. I'm sure you are all aware, and I'm happy to share the resources and the research with you, anyone here, that there is a growing number of research showing that excessive phone and social media use harms and negatively impacts kids' mental health, increases the risk of cyberbullying, and distracts them from learning. I'm so happy New Jersey Senate unanimously approved Governor Murphy's bill to ban cellphone use in K-12 classrooms in January. He also proposed allocating $3 million to help school districts implement phone-free environments, such as purchasing phone pouches or other containment systems. Districts like Ramsey and Cherry Hill have successfully implemented cellphone bans and have used programs like Yonder Phone Pouches and have reported better student behavior, fewer conflicts, and improved academic focus. Many private schools, including Morristown Beer, are also banning cellphones starting this fall. I believe we need to do the same thing and enforce it consistently for K-12 students here at Melbourne. In my experience, any existing policy that restricts cellphone use in our schools today is not working, and our teachers and administrators are frustrated. For example, last week, I dropped off my daughter at school and heard an announcement over the PA stating that any student caught with a cellphone in the hallway would have it confiscated. Then last Monday was field day for 6th and 7th graders, and it rained. Many students texted their parents to bring dry clothes or to pick them up. Almost half of the grade left. It became such an issue that school sent the principal sent an email reminding parents to tell their children not to call or text during the school day. This is another example of how the current policy isn't working. My request is that the board prioritize this issue, set it as one of the next year's school goals, and that to establish a clear, consistent, and strict policy to ban cellphones during school hours.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bahar Farose. I live at 7 Ferindel Road. I'm an MHS graduate many, many years ago, and I just want to echo what Esther said. I'm here to support the same idea that I think cellphone use in school is not necessary. It causes a lot of distraction. It's hard to, you know, children have them whether or not they're not supposed to, and it definitely impacts learning. The American Academy of Pediatrics, you know, has a whole, you know, understanding about limiting technology, and I think they use a lot of technology, maybe more than they should, with their Chromebooks. And I know that it costs the district a lot less to not have to invest in a lot of books and paper things, and technology is really replacing a lot of that. So, which I don't love that either, but I know that's the way the future is moving, and they do need to know how to use technology. But I don't see a reason for phone usage, and I would love to see it totally banned. And just like Esther said, a lot of districts in New Jersey are moving that way. Private schools locally are moving that way, and I know a lot of parents take that into account when deciding where their child is going to be for middle school and high school, and I would love to see that in the public school.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amita Kamath. I'm at 26 Knollwood Road, and I'm also here as a concerned parent and mom, and I wanted to echo Bahar and Esther's statements about cellphone use in schools. I have, I will have three middle schoolers in the fall, one 6th grader and two 8th graders, so this is going to be something that's very much what I'll be dealing with outside of school at home, with our personal devices and when to use them and when not to use them. But the one place that I don't want to have to worry about them using them is in the classroom. I would like them to focus. I would like them to be engaged, and I would like our district to take the lead in making that happen for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Swagatwa Charji. I'm a parent of an 8th grader and a 3rd grader in Melbourne schools. So I'm speaking tonight on behalf of a large and deeply concerned group of Melbourne middle school parents. Over the past few weeks, nearly 350 parents have signed a petition requesting needed updates to MMS grading and grading practices and course access policies. Many more have expressed support privately, often because they were uncomfortable signing their names, but still share the same concerns. First, we want to acknowledge and thank the district for the positive steps that we have already taken at Melbourne High School, particularly around supportive grading, structured retesting, and more reasonable cutoffs for advanced course access. These changes have been well-received by families, and we are grateful for the leadership that made them possible. Sorry. But these same improvements have not yet reached our middle school students. At MMS, the policies like the absence of in retesting, the 93% cutoff for accelerated access, and a lack of transparency around assessment data are placing undue stress on our children, discouraging academic risk-taking and contributing to inequity. Our petition outlines four specific constructive requests that we believe are both achievable and aligned with the best practices already in place at MHS. We respectfully request to lower the grade cutoff for accelerated courses from 93 to something more reasonable, in keeping with the district's own definition of proficiency. We request to implement a structured retesting or test correction policy across subjects to promote learning and growth. We also request to ensure assessment averages are shared with students and families to foster transparency and trust. And of course, we need to offer multiple equitable pathways into advanced coursework, recognizing that a single metric doesn't fully capture student readiness. And we all understand, these are not radical proposals. They have been implemented in MHS already. These are common sense steps towards a more compassionate, equitable, and effective learning environment, one where students are encouraged to grow from their mistakes and not penalized for it, one that nurtures confidence and allows all learners the opportunity to excel. We recognize that policy change is not always simple. However, we urge the board and administration to prioritize these changes for the upcoming school year. The stakes for our children's academic well-being, their mental health, and their future opportunities are simply too high to ignore. Just one more sentence. And I'm thankful that we heard from Mr. Finkelstein that we are looking at these changes, and I sincerely thank the board for that, and thank you for your time, and thank you for your commitment to all the changes that you're making at our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Aaron Penn. I live at 86 Sniper Street, and I'm a senior at Melbourne High School. As I'm graduating in a week, I feel like my remarks today have no personal agenda or conclusions that I have made candidly and independently. I believe that the Board of Education was elected to accomplish two goals, and two goals only: academic excellence and fair admissions to college. For the first time in four years at Melbourne, I will admit that the district is failing at both. Firstly, academic excellence. Beginning of this year, I felt genuine optimism that the district's new regrading policy would quote-unquote "foster a growth mindset." I believe that the district meant well and continues to do so. But good intentions do not excuse poor results. Every student and teacher I talk to knows it has been a failure. Students could care less about a growth mindset. We see a new policy that we can exploit to artificially increase our grades, taking advantage of a system in which we can study at a minimum for our initial tests, knowing we can take easier retakes to raise our scores. I will admit with full honesty that I've put in half the effort this year and earned higher grades than ever before. If the board wishes to understand what the silent majority of its students think, it's this: if there was a culture of academic excellence in Melbourne before, it is most definitely gone. This policy has created a mindset of gaming the system, not mastering the materials. I sincerely hope this doesn't continue. Secondly, college preparation. It's no secret that the ultimate goal for many parents in this district is college admissions. I'm going to say the quiet part out loud, that the district's new educational philosophy, reflected in changes to the grading in AP classes, have in part aimed simply to send more of our kids to top-tier universities at the expense of academic education. I've heard the district say that it is their goal, under the name of equity, to give all students a way to become top students. That's frankly the silliest oxymoron I've ever heard. By definition, not all students can be top students in a meritocracy. It is those who put in the work, show the aptitude, and demonstrate excellence in classrooms, regardless of background, who should succeed. Instead, we've encouraged mediocrity this year while punishing excellence. When colleges now come to Melbourne, they see an artificial GPA, not reflective of students' true abilities. When GPA is no longer reliable, colleges and universities turn toward extracurriculars that wealthy families can afford to differentiate themselves with. Yes, there were certainly academic issues that before that we must address, but the district has replaced one problem with a far greater one: a system that pretends everyone is exceptional while quietly benefiting those with the resources to stand out in other ways. As I leave the district in nine ways, my parting wish, if you will, is this: for the board to seriously consider both my testimony and the testimony from staff liaison and the experiences of teachers and administrators who have clearly expressed their concern as well. I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ma.
Hello, good evening. My name is Holden Burgum, 10 Fox Hill Lane. So, I'm also a high school senior, and that also means I'm wrapping up my eighth year as a member of Melbourne Bands. So, you can imagine I was pretty disappointed when I heard about the policy for APs that is allowing students to remove the cap on how many APs can count for their GPA weighting. So, the reason I'm disappointed is because when I think about the achievements of the ban from the past four years, for example, attending regional competitions, working with local composers and residents, and the great learning experiences for me about not only musicianship, but also responsibility and learning to thrive in the environment under pressure, I also considered that, how this AP policy is in fact ruinous for our music department. Here's why. So, students, if this policy comes into effect next year, would undoubtedly opt for getting the maximum amount of AP credits possible. But in doing so, they would have to take all those AP classes, and this sacrifices their participation in musical ensembles, which wouldn't, under this new policy, offer AP weighting. And it would be for the sake of their GPA, and it's unfortunate, but a lot of students would opt for this because that's just how Melbourne is. GPA is kind of everything at Melbourne. As a student myself, I've witnessed this firsthand. And I do appreciate how a member of the board mentioned before that Mr. Connolly plans to reach out to other districts to learn about how they handle certain repercussions like of this policy. But there's not a lot of time, as you guys know, as you only have one summer to work this out. So, please consider. In the musical ensembles, every student counts. We all contribute to our respective ensemble's unique sound, and the policy may cut not only a number of our students from the musical ensembles, but force our hard-working band directors to have to shrink the number of musical ensembles that we have due to a lack of interest as we move into the next school year. And it's a shame, because the beauty of our music department is that the existing interest from all of the constituent students is kind of what makes us who we are, and we can't lose that. We boast our numerous ensembles at regional competitions, and the literal sea of blue Melbourne band jackets at our home football games is quite frankly awe-inspiring. So, I hope you consider my take. And the solution, the obvious solution for you guys, if you're not going to obviously like pull back the policy, would be to give AP weighting to our higher-level musical ensembles to retain a similar level of participation in the music program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgum.
Jeanette Glass, 348 Old Churchill's Road. I am not a high school graduate. Today, we honored staff, teachers, and administrators moving on to new chapters with heartfelt gratitude for all they had given to our schools. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize another incredible member of our community who is sadly also moving on, Zach Glad. Per district and state policy, this individual is a non-voting board member, whose role supports the board, student body, and school district. The position recognizes the value of student input in improving district operations, with a key duty being to represent all high school students and present their proposals and concerns to the board. Wow, Zach has truly done an outstanding job fulfilling his role, all while keeping us engaged and entertained along the way. His reports have been thoughtful, informative, and always centered on students' best interest. They reflected curiosity, respect, and genuine drive to find solutions. Through his every word, the voices of high school students rang clear and strong. In a country where communication and the civil right of free speech are powerful privileges, Zach reminded us how impactful those tools can be when used for the greater good. It is moments like these that make us proud to see our district graduating such bright, courageous, and capable young leaders. Congratulations, Zach, and the best of luck on incredible journey ahead. But before you go, I have a couple of questions and requests. As a board member and a legend of polls, can you please conduct a poll to determine how many student athletes in our district are participating in individualized, rigorous training program of at least 18 hours per week, which prepares them for competition on an elite national level? Who would qualify for accommodations under Policy 2425.1, Independence.PE? I would like to ask why some of your speeches have been muted in the Board of Education meeting's recordings, preventing those who were unable to attend from hearing what you had to convey to the board and our community. Lastly, I would like to ask the board why you were not given the opportunity to speak or ask questions during the last meeting, despite raising your hand multiple times. I have heard this was intentional decision. If that is the case, it raises a serious question: is your role meant to offer genuine insight or simply to serve as a formality? Zach, during these often long and complex board meetings, filled with high-stakes decisions, budgets, personal grievances, and other boring topics, your speeches were a breath of fresh air. You were the bright spot amid the routine, and your speeches were the light in the middle of the tunnel that everyone looked forward to. Thank you for being that voice for students and for our community. Best of luck to your successor, whoever they may be. They certainly have big shoes to fill. Farewell and all the best on Farewell and all the best on your next journey. You will be missed.
Thank you, Ms. Seth.
Hi, Holden Bergum, Ten Fox Hill Lane. I'm... Sorry, should I give a turn to these? Yeah.
Ms. Heinfanger, you haven't spoke yet. Mr. Feld, you haven't spoke yet.
Hi, Lois Heinfanger. I'm president of the Milburn Education Association, representing teachers, secretaries, paraprofessionals, technicians, I can go on and on. So I want to clarify one thing that you said, Mr. Heinrichs, and that's while those are the percentages that were agreed to, that goes to the pot of money. Not each person gets that percentage. So I don't know if that was clear to folks, so I just want to make sure that's very clear. That's the big pot of money that then gets divvied up. But I come with good news. The... My membership ratified our contract, so I deliver that to you, and I hope that you all will do the exact same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinfanger.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Feld, 11 Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. Basically, I have four points to make. Dr. Emily Bick, my son graduated high school and college with her, and it's good to know about the alumni coming back. With that statement, I think the board might want to contact a recent graduate who I met in Denver last week. She's a friend of our family. She works for the U.S. Olympic Team. U.S. Olympic Team. You might want to talk to her about how they want to be handling elite athletes to give us input into the program. I'll give you her name outside of this meeting. I too, I don't know, for the last three years, I support the music program. It was very beneficial to my children. It makes them, expands them, and when they go to colleges, when they play in pep bands, the first day of class, they make friends with various people in that program. We had to defend our kids being broad-based and having the arts. I'm glad you brought up about revenues, because what I appeared before you, I talked to you about one of the problems we have about challenges to our revenues as a school system, that being the long-term tax exemptions. On June 6th, this Superior Court basically ignored the public input and approved a pilot for the nine Main Street program without any fiscal input, because it impacts school because no revenues from a pilot goes to the school district. On Wednesday, the Planning Board will be considering the fourth round housing element. I think some representatives of the school board should needs to be there about what is the future problems or needs going to be into our society on the infrastructure. And we have to talk about declining enrollment. I think we really have to start focusing on that because that's going to affect state A's. But the more important question will be, is what occurred at the last meeting? When the content of my expression and various others... Am I three minutes up already? All right, I guess I'll come back at the end of the meeting. We'll discuss this. Thank you.
Hi, Holden Bergum, Ten Fox Hill Lane. There were just a few points I wanted to add that I didn't get to originally, because I wanted to give the others a chance. But I was talking about musical ensembles, and I do want to add that I feel that this policy doesn't only affect musical ensembles, and there are other aspects of our school that this is impacting. I'm sure some of you guys remember last year, a student commented about how a related topic, AP access, is the increase of AP access is at the expense of smaller classes, smaller, more niche classes, such as human rights, oceanography, all those half-year electives. And I did want to reiterate with this, with points, reiterate this point, because as you have more students who are becoming interested in APs with these new policies, there's less space for those classes to exist, because it's a shame for students who may actually be interested in furthering their interest in those topics if all of these classrooms are consistently being taken up by another AP class. So even if next year, those classes are miraculously offered, the students who do have a genuine passion for those subjects may actually opt for APs instead, because like I said in my earlier comment, GPA really is everything at Milburn. And you can't do much to change that almost toxic culture, but the least you can do is prevent that culture from worsening with policies like this. And I did want to add one more point. I know you guys were talking about the auditorium renovations. I would just encourage you guys to make sure we're speeding up that process as much as possible. I know that may be beyond your control. However, I have heard how a lot of the materials that is used in the high school and the middle school on the stage for the stage crew is really antiquated and is actually extremely dangerous for the students to be working with. You know, God forbid there's any sort of injury among the students. And I did want to add actually that figuring out how to deal with this is going to take a while, and that may actually impact the timing for the fall production at the high school. So I guess I would encourage you guys to communicate with the theater torment to make sure that stuff has worked out appropriately. But thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Shital Prasad, 25 Pine Terrace East. I'm part of the posse here tonight to request that cellphones be taken out of the classrooms. I understand the need to have cellphones in the schools for emergencies. I do think that the middle school has not, you know, threaded the needle okay with keeping them in the lockers. In the high school, I think it is a huge distraction. It is unfair to the teachers, and I would highly encourage you, as a district, to be ahead of the curve on this. Please do not wait for, you know, direction from the state. I know that following the two-hour Board of Ed meeting that you had earlier this year, there was a response on one of the documents suggesting that we are in line with other school districts. I hate to say, I don't care about the other school districts. We need to take a stand. We need to be differentiated. We need to be ahead of the curve. The ball is actually rolling down the hill, and I would rather us be ahead of it than behind it. So please take this seriously. I think it's an easy fix and can be implemented as early as this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. All right, I think we got through our first round of public comments. No discussion topics tonight. Moving on to board action items. Item one, instruction agenda items. Are there any carve-outs for this section? Seeing none, can I have a motion to move Instruction Agenda Items M1A through M1G in consent agenda format? Mr. Finkelstein, Ms. Shivani can second. All in favor? Can I have a motion to approve Instruction Agenda Items M1A through M1G in consent agenda Ms. Longley Richards? Ms. Shivani can second. A, resolve to affirm the superintendent's recommendation of the HIB investigations for the period of 5/28/25 to 6/11/25. B, resolve to approve professional development request. C, resolve to approve the provider pivotal APA for services to students during the 25-26 school year. D, resolve to approve the school nursing plan and school nurse assignments for the school year 25-26. E, resolve to approve the provider Center for Wellness for consultation and professional development services for staff during the 25-26 school year. F, resolve to approve out-of-district special education placements for the 25-26 school year as listed below. G, resolve to approve the provider care ed consulting professional development slash consultation services during the 25-26 school year. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bethina?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Ms. Shivani?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrichs?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item two, personal agenda items. Can I have a motion to move Personnel Agenda Item M2A to ratify the agreement between the Milburn Education Association and the Board of Education? Ms. Shivani? Ms. Bethina can second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Mr. Long... Oh, sorry, Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Ms. Bethina?
Yes.
Ms. Shivani?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrichs?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Reddy, did you have a comment that you didn't sneak in there?
Appreciate the opportunity.
We can allow it now, now that you voted yes.
First, I want to give a shout-out to the appointment of Mrs. Kristen Muller to be the lead elementary principal. It's in the personnel report. Under her leadership, Wyoming has brought a lot of innovation, innovative methods into the classroom. I can't think of anyone better to coach the new principals and accommodate them to Milburn. Together with the Leadership Academy that Dr. Diskin will be running this summer, the school district is taking the right steps to help usher in a new culture in the school district. Second, negotiations, Mr. Heinrichs, I want to first correct the record that as of now, we're on the negotiations committee for the entire year and a half that we negotiated with the MEA. But more importantly, I'll note with some satisfaction that the board has been able to complete and approve the MEA contract within a year. Most school districts take at least a year to complete an agreement. And if you look at the history of Milburn itself, last three contracts with the school district, 2014, 2017, 2020, were completed through the intervention of PERC or other mediators, and all took more than a year, with the 2020 contract taking more than two years. This board completed it within a year while presiding over the largest change in grading access and organizational change that the school district has ever seen. While neither side got everything that they wanted, I'm gratified to note one of the main issues we set, the board set to solve, was the starting teacher salary at Milburn. Historically, younger employees, by virtue of being a smaller fraction of the union, did not receive good raises. As a result, Milburn was not competitive to comparative districts in District Factor J, such as Montgomery, Mountain Lakes, West Wind, South Plainsboro, Chatham, and so on. This negotiated contract addresses that issue to an extent. Obviously, more work needs to be done to bridge that remaining gap by future votes. With my earlier comments, my colleagues have good reason to think I'm very tough on them. But my high expectations are the result of their high performance. I congratulate all of them for concluding this contract, and in particular, the negotiations chaired through the year and a half, Mr. Heinrichs, on this important milestone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Can I have a motion to move Personnel Agenda Items M2B and C in consent agenda format? Ms. Shivani, Mr. Finkelstein can second. All in favor? Can I have a motion to approve Personnel Agenda Items M2B and C in consent agenda format? Mr. Reddy, Ms. Longley Richards can second. B, resolve to approve the personnel report ended denim dated June 16th, 2025. C, resolve to authorize Dr. Kate Diskin, superintendent, to point or transfer staff for the period June 16th, 2025 through September 8th, 2025. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Ms. Bethina?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Ms. Shivani?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrichs?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Dr. Diskin usually recognizes people who are retired. I think we have one here. Did she brief you on that, Mr. Connelly?
She didn't, but I believe we have...
Mr. Brian Chapman?
Mr. Brian Chapman, teacher and also baseball coach. So congratulations to Mr. Chapman.
All right, moving on. Item three, business agenda items. Any carve-outs? Can I have a motion to move Business Agenda Items M3A through M3O in consent agenda format? Ms. Bethina, Mr. Bigman can second. All in favor? Mr. Finkelstein, was that an oppose or an abstention?
No, sorry.
Okay. All in favor then. Can I have a motion to approve Business Agenda Items M3A through M...
Three L?
Yeah, that should be a three. Three O in consent agenda format? Mr. Bigman, Ms. Longley Richards can second. A, resolve to approve the budget transfers of May 2025. B, resolve to approve Treasurer of School Money's report for a period ending May 31st, 2025. C, resolve approval and certification of Board Secretaries' report for a period ending May 31st, 2025. D, resolve certification that, to the best of the board's knowledge, no major account or fund has been over-expended and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. E, resolve to approve Bill Schedule Number 13. F, resolve to approve the application for alternative method of compliance for toilet rooms. G, resolve to approve an application for the dual use of educational space. H, resolve to approve the cafeteria price list for the high school and middle school for the school year 25-26. I, resolve to authorize the transfer of the interest earned on capital project funds to the debt service fund. J, resolve resolution regarding transfer of current year surplus to capital reserves. K, resolution regarding transfers of current year surplus to maintenance reserves. L, resolve to approve a one-year agreement with Imagine Learning for Grades K2 Early Literacy/ Dyslexia Screener. M, resolution for the participation in the Mozik New Jersey Cooperative. N, resolve to approve a purchase agreement with Eastern Datacom for the purchase of phones. O, resolve to approve one year, year one of a four-year agreement with Eastern Datacom of Hackensack, New Jersey for communication equipment and managed services. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Longley Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Ms. Bethina?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Finkelstein?
Yes.
Ms. Shivani?
Yes.
Mr. Heinrichs?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on, was there any old business? Is there any new business? Second round of public comments. Same rules apply as the first round?
Jeffrey Feld, 11 Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. Just want to finish what I was trying to say the first time. When you talk about your mission statement, you talk about to try to train the students to be successful and engaged citizens in the ever-changing world. At the last meeting, there was efforts by whoever was the chair, wasn't you, Chris, at the last meeting, trying to suppress the content of what the public was saying. I think you should reconsider this. This is not the first time in the last three years that statements have been coming, whoever was the chair of the meeting, trying to suppress comments. Once, I think, or last summer, where various graduates came out and they wanted to talk about in support of a former student, I mean, teacher. I raise this, I sent you a case today about content suppression, but more importantly, today, American Bar Association filed a complaint in Washington, DC. I can't tell you how many defendants are named in that case talking about First Amendment. That's not just the Open Public Meetings Act, but you have to look at our state and federal constitutions when citizens get up here and speak. And there should be some kind of, I don't think I'm harassing or intimidating, I don't believe I am with the tone of my voice, but people should be allowed to speak without any type of suppression of the content of their comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. Sir, one more comment?
Akash Gupta, 6 issue, Meadowbrook, Short Hills. I have a quick question regarding the recent standardized map testing that we had in the middle school. I think we had it last year also. I was wondering if there is any plan to share district-wide results for last year or this year for the tests, like how did our student perform? The reason I'm asking this question is because it's a very great benchmark for our school performance. How does it relate to nationwide performance? Because otherwise, most of the time, we are looking inwards, like, does the student qualify? And to succeed in the... and to succeed in the next level or not? But this gives a very nice benchmark to look at outwards and how do we compare to the nationwide curriculum and standards? So I was wondering if there is any plan to share it with the community, the district-wise results. That's my comment. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Gupta. All right, seeing no more comments, I'll move on. We have an executive session this evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Did I skip? Oh, my apologies. Board member comments. Trying to suppress the speech of my fellow board members. And I'm not making fun. Go ahead, Ms. Shivani.
Yeah, so I really do want to remind people of this 0167 Public Participation and Board Meeting, which clearly states that the presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant to the district. So as the presiding officer of the last meeting, you know, if I hear comments about the mayor of the district engaged in a lawsuit with somebody who is making a comment, I believe that that is irrelevant to the district, should not be addressed at the podium. And hence, it was not a suppression of free speech. It is well within the policy here.
No back and forth, please. Any other board member comments? Mr. Bigman?
So I didn't congratulate Zach. I think everybody else in the room did prior to this. And I didn't want to add on to it too much, but, you know, only because, you know, if you have one person say something like that, I think that encapsulates really the performance. And it's not to say that past student representatives haven't had a voice, because I think everybody in this district actually has a voice. You know, I understand the teachers' voice from listening to the head of the teachers' union. I also sat recently with nine other teachers in a staff liaison meeting and listened to all of their voices. Since I've ran and I'm the newest member of the board, I've listened to hundreds and maybe more of parents' voices and students' voices. And what I wanted to really say, not to, again, take away from you, Zach, I think we're better as a district when everybody's voices are heard and when we collaborate with each other, because that truly unleashes the power. The things that you see in front of this board from meeting to meeting are truly outstanding. I mean, they just really show how special this whole town is. And that doesn't come from one person. It comes from everybody. And I think it comes from the synergies that we realize, from the diversity, from the equity, from the inclusion, from the talent, from the effort, from the passion. So while a lot of these things might sound problematic or issue-oriented, I also don't think we should lose sight of all the great things that we listen to week in and week out from this entire school district. The 58 years, 44 years, you know, you see a list of 20 pages of people that come to this district every day, whether they're an administrator, a teacher, or working in whatever capacity. But they do come together and create something very special here, and I don't think we should lose sight of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bigman. Ms. Longley Richards?
I just wanted to make a quick comment about the one student's kind of accusation of failure here in what we've done, which was really personally kind of offensive to me as an educator and somebody who helped work on these policies. They might not be perfect, but they certainly have made a big difference. This, grades are not pie. There aren't a limited amount of As. School is a meritocracy in one way, but it's also a learning environment. And we have the top SATs in the state. We had less than 3% straight A students, less, maybe 1%? 1% straight A students? Or 0% straight A students? Everybody who is willing to work hard, whether it's the first time or the second time, deserves the grades that they earn. And to be perfectly honest with you, grades are not what differentiates students. It is the extracurriculars, and it's not just rich families to pay for extracurriculars. I work in a very socio-economically diverse district, and those kids have so many opportunities to extracurriculars through the schools, through things that don't cost money, and they thrive on it. They are full of these things, and that is what distinguishes our students, is what they do in addition to their grades. Grades are not the only benchmark of college admissions. And I will beat this till I can no longer beat it. When I was in high school, and yes, it was a different landscape in colleges, three students applied to the same university, myself included. Both of the other students had better grades and better SATs than I did, but I was the musician, and that's what the college wanted, and I was the only one that got in. So we are more than our grades. We are more than the top 1%, 10%, whatever. We have amazing students, and everyone deserves a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longley Richards. Mr. Ready?
I want to touch on the same topic. I wish the student that spoke earlier about retesting in high school had stayed. I hope he'll pay more attention in college than he did earlier in the meeting when I said that less than 1% of students have As in the whole ten grade English and about half the students are getting a, were getting a school grade worse than the proficiency indicated by their college board score. The important thing is that the grades should reflect the proficiency. Whether we get there by retesting or otherwise, that is not material. What would be instructive for him to study is to see the board presentations back in October and in April. The presentation in October always bear the grade deflation with statistics in each grade and subject area. And the April presentation shows how the retesting corrected that grade deflation. I want to end, hopefully end the meeting, and hopefully not. I want to go back to the Juneteenth celebration that Mr. Conley brought up. It marks the day in 1865 when Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, and informed the last enslaved people of their freedom, more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. In this time of great uncertainty and conflict, we can only be safe by engaging with each other even more, not less. If we are not alone in confronting injustice and hate, we stand together. The Juneteenth celebration in Melbourne tomorrow is an opportunity to celebrate our togetherness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Ms. Shivani?
So I want to go back to the comments that Ms. Longley Richards and Mr. Ready made. And we heard a few comments at today's meeting from the students and from, you know, some parents probably also. So I feel like we're not really looking at the data when we're making these comments, and I would really encourage especially the students to make their thoughts a little bit more ingrained in the data. I mean, as Mr. Ready said, there was data that was presented back in October, which kind of is, you know, one reason, and the test correction is one way to sort of help bridge that gap. The SAT scores, the standardized test is another data point to use. We heard comments about decline in enrollment in music, and I'm actually curious to know if this is a coincidence, if there is actually a correlation. I mean, I absolutely, as someone who dabbles in music, I completely understand how dedicated one has to be to get to any level of excellence in music. And Ms. Longley Richards is a professional musician herself. So I completely understand those comments, and I think that is something that maybe we can look at as a district. How do we justify and reward those students for that commitment that they make? Certainly, they should not feel pressured to take more AP courses at the expense of music. But by the same token, if you really are a dedicated musician, is the AP, opening up AP really going to change you or change your motivation a little bit? I am curious to know where that is coming from. Because there are other schools who have open AP access. You can take as many AP courses regardless of whether you have a cap or not. And there are other schools which actually have, you know, really good music programs as well. They have marching bands. We don't even have a marching band, and there are students who are doing that. So I'm curious to know what this, you know, I heard a lot about this music and because this cap has been lifted on AP, suddenly there's a decline in music. I would like to see the data to back that. Definitely, it's a disturbing trend. But I would also want to advocate that there are students who are taking more than the limited number of AP courses despite knowing that there's a cap. So what about them? What about rewarding them, right? And again, look at the schools that have open AP access and how are they balancing other interests and courses and activities despite that? Just my comment for night.
Thank you, Ms. Shivani. Mr. Finkelstein?
Yeah, just thought, not Mr. Conley to put you on the spot, but just the parents that came to the podium tonight concerned about cell phone use, which I'm also concerned about as a parent, and I think most of us, if not all of us, are. To my knowledge, the phones are kept in the locker. We can address this in a future meeting, but I don't know if you happen to know the policy. If there's anything you can comment. I don't think cell phones are permitted. But is this something that we can look into and maybe you could just enlighten on the middle? They were asking on the middle school and the high school.
So to speak to the middle school, the phones are, the policy that stands is that phones are to remain in the locker, right? And so that is the policy that is enforced. Students will be students, right? And so they will do everything they can to get around that policy, and we have to deal with that accordingly, and there are deterrence in place to do that. I do believe we can enhance that and work to build on that and strengthen, especially based on the feedback that we're getting from the community. So it's something we certainly can look into at the middle school. I'm sure it would be something that would be welcomed on many fronts. To the high school, they carry those phones and they're on their person. I think we'd have to look into that more carefully and see what that would look like as far as extending more stringent policies to prevent the use of the cellphone in that space. But the short answer is yes, we can look into it and certainly get back to everybody.
And then, just to follow up on the music concerns, which we did, I think we both mentioned in our program minutes from the last two meetings. I know we were looking at some of the waiting issues as well was presented. But other schools, and Ms. Shivani raising the issue too, how does this work at other schools where they have even more liberal AP policies than we do? So I don't know, have we yet or can we, we can add to the program agenda, what other schools, how they wait their music programs to see if a handful of schools do that?
So we did do some of that research. We have some of that data. And we do know that in many of the schools that have more of an open AP access, that they do have some sort of two-tiered system that applies to their honors and AP courses and then their CP level courses, which would be the college CPB and CPA courses. As we've discussed in program, I think this is a conversation that we need to kind of dig into a little bit more. We want to make sure that whatever decision we make has a positive impact on students and solves the problem as opposed to just reacting right away. So we have that data. We have a list of schools and how they do it. They are comparable schools that would fall within the ones that we would want to align ourselves with as far as a policy on that. So we can continue to have that conversation. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finkelstein. Thank you, Mr. Conley. I did talk to Dr. Diskin back in February or March about cellphone ban when it kind of became a topic at the state level. And it kind of got waylaid, waiting for state regulation, and a bunch of other things came in. So I'm certainly in favor of doing something. So we'll definitely get that back on the agenda over the summer. So thank you to all the parents for reminding us of that issue. I'd also like to comment on Mr. Eric Mann. First of all, I want to say I appreciate his comment. More seniors should come to the podium and kind of tell us what they really think. It may offend some of us. Good, that, like, we want to hear those opinions. So I think many of the board members push back on the content of the comments, but I wanted to clarify that. I'm sure all of us appreciate the comment and would encourage more to come forth. I certainly disagree. I don't believe the school is a meritocracy. There are standards. If everyone beats those standards, they get good grades. So we do things to differentiate those who truly excel from the others, but I do think Melbourne may have a history of differentiating the top by pushing down the middle, and that's not acceptable. So I will continue to push back on those policies and push forward in a very equitable grading system. Can I finish, Mr. Finkelstein? I had another point, but I totally forgot what I was going to say, but, so please, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to follow up and thank you for your comments and agree with them fully. Mr. Conley, also, sorry, not to put you on the spot again, but just to, I'm going to. But I think, you know, we've also mentioned in program committee meetings that we're continuing to talk with, you're continuing to talk with teachers, and we're discussing it in committee, any tweaks to that grading program as well. And when we rolled it out originally, we said it's going to be something that evolves over time, and we change as we go and we see need. So some criticism is fair, some things are, you know, again, we don't want to sacrifice the perfect for the good, where, you know, nothing can be perfect, but we can improve a lot of student outcomes. But I think we are doing some polling of teachers and students on a bunch of topics this year, this spring before people leave for the summer. So we'll have a lot of feedback from, you know, more than one or two people that come to the podium, I think, right? Is that fair? Just confirm.
Yes, we did a faculty poll, which we had about 70 respondents. And there, I believe was rolled out today, was a student poll. And there were many topics that were asked of that, one being the grading and assessment. But just to kind of, to all that point, I think we should see this as a process that evolves, right? And so there's the grading and assessment guidelines that have been put in place, and we'll continue to look at those and evaluate those and make tweaks to, you know, get to that equitable grading system. I think someone mentioned before, it's a bridge, right? And we need to use that as the bridge to get to where we want to be and make sure that we're constantly looking at this to make sure it's best. So thank you.
I think my final point was along the lines of the change in the AP weighting and how it impacted music. And I think this is illustrative of a lot of the challenges we face. Oftentimes, there are policy proposals, and they're like, this is simple. Why can't you do this? I feel like there always are downstream ramifications to all of these things. I do believe the administration actually understands these and talks about most of them and makes an intelligent choice on the policy. I can't remember us sort of like being surprised by, oops, we didn't think of that. I do think we think about these things. It's always a choice of, do we, as Mr. Finkelstein just said, don't let perfect be the enemy of good. We get a good policy out there. We know there are going to be tweaks in the future, but time versus perfection is always the challenge. We don't always get it right, but I think we try and get it right most of the time. So I just wanted to make that final comment. So this was quite the lively group tonight. Mr. Glatt, I don't even know if you're allowed to speak or the rules, but it's your last meeting, so please go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank everyone for their nice comments tonight. Oh, it's not on?
Hello?
Okay, now it's on. So first, I'd like to thank everyone for their very nice comments tonight. And next thing, thank you for your comments as well, and you suggested me doing a poll. Well, tonight is my last board meeting. If you want to talk after the meeting, we could see a poll and I could send it to you for the results. The other thing is the student about the test corrections. While I don't necessarily agree with everything he said, he does bring one point about students slacking off a bit because they know I have that second chance. So I think that's definitely something to look at. And also about the APs.
Thank you, Mr. Glatt. Is everybody talked out? Excellent. Now, can I have a motion to adjourn to the executive session, discuss personnel matters? Mr. Bigman, Ms. Longley Richards can second. The discussion of this topic will be disclosed to the public at the next public meeting of the board or as soon thereafter as circumstances and nature of the subject permits. All in favor? We are an exec. We are an exec.